Okay, it's 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the public portion of our meeting back to order. And I'd like to start by rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A. And I'll entertain any motions regarding that non-public session. And since I have it open, I'll make a motion. I would move to seal the -- or I would move that the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A 3 to C and A, and that they keep all matters discussed confidential until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply, except to provide the payroll. Actually, we don't need that one today.
No.
Actually, I think we do. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Apply except to provide the payroll administrator with the necessary information for payroll. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was everybody. Can you make one for the 29th, Bob?
I can. I'm going to move to seal the non-public session mandate dated January 29, 2023, under RSA 91-A 3 to C reputation, and that they keep all matters discussed confidential until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. B, it's the ARPA EOC update.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, this isn't too long. Twenty-seven pages. No, only kidding. So the ARPA work group has been very productive. You've heard us in the past talking about security cameras in various places, town property, town buildings. And we have finally, the group has approved and recommending to the Board of Selectment the first two groups of cameras, one for, or I shouldn't say one, for a group for Greenie Park and also the Town Beach. The work group has recommended to the Board of Selectment that we move forward with this. The requisition is going to be presented to you tonight for the TV monitors that will be located at the police station. They're 65-inch, I was going to say feet, 65-inch monitors, and we'll be able to see everything. And also internet for the next 12 months. I believe that's in front of you. And then after that, obviously, this is going to be a budget item, and also for the cameras. The work group also approved, at the request of our town clerk and our moderator, seven voting booths. And they're, I should have brought a picture, I'm sorry. They're a four-station voting booth, so it's going to be one structure with four different ways to vote. We desperately need these, and we got an opportunity with some information that the town clerk got. So the board, the work group, sorry, is recommending this to you. And they did tell us, I called the company, and they did tell us, I explained we weren't meeting till tonight, and they said, that's plenty of time. They're getting a lot of calls because it's a good price from New Hampshire towns, and they know they've got a deadline. So they were all prepared. I will ask if you do sign that requisition, if Diane can get it to me tomorrow. We also have, the work group has received information from our library. They are working on getting quotes for a replacement for a furnace. This is like just new to us on our agenda. This wasn't on our agenda in the past. So once they, we've got three votes, so votes, quotes so far. And once we get more, the work group is going to work on it, and we'll bring it to you based on the building and, I don't know, the future of the building. You know, you may decide something different, but we're just doing what we've been asked to do. The EOC report, E911 is in front of you tonight. Evidently, a few years ago, we applied on this program, and something happened with our application, so it never actually got processed. They reached out again to me in January, and we definitely want this. This provides great communication to our residents. There's two different pieces to it. There's emergency E911, and there's non-emergency E911. In front of you is me as the contact person. And then I think we also included the other people that can use the system, which would be, for emergency, it would be police chief, fire chief, and me. For non-emergency, the town clerk and the deputy town clerk agreed to do that. It couldn't be the same people for that. And that would be for things like, I don't know, reminding them where we're going to vote, or if all of a sudden the transfer station had changed hours, something that's not an emergency. So I think this is a great, a great item for us to have, so that is in front of you. Also, the EOC has been activated twice in the last month due to weather conditions. Was that, I don't even have any mics on me. That wasn't me. Sorry, TV land. The EOC has been acted twice in the last month because of weather-related issues. And just reminding you, this allows the residents, any kind of assistance that you need during, you know what, is this still on?
Yeah.
Now it doesn't seem like it is, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. For an emergency. And when we have something, whether it's power outages, trees down, road closures, that maybe you are concerned that we don't know about, please call, police, fire, or the EOC line. Let us know so that we can get out there. And residents needing a warming station if we have a power outage, you can come to the EOC. That stands for Emergency Management Center. That's at the fire station. It's, you can get warm, charge your phone. I might even make you a cup of coffee, who knows? And we welcome you. Should we have long-term power outages? We have made arrangements with area shelters that will allow residents to also bring their pets, so keep that in mind. And lastly, remember that the pandemic is still here. People are still getting sick, and everybody's getting a little lax. So the Emergency Management Department Board of Selectment and Town Administrator are requesting, do as much business as you can online. This especially comes from the town clerk, tax collector. She said motor vehicles, dog licenses, try to do what you can online. Certainly, if you're sick, we don't want to see you. Stay home, go online. And if you do have any questions, give us a call. I also, as a reminder to all our staff, volunteers, boards, and committees, I am supposed to do contact tracing. If you happen to get sick, or even if you have an immediate family member that gets sick, call me and let me know. I'm, I'll give you the guidelines from CDC. I'll make sure you have test kits, masks, sanitizer, whatever you might need. And also give you guidance as to how to handle yourself, you know, maybe before you have symptoms and after you have symptoms. So please give me a call. The number at the EOC is 382-1610. And lastly, for the last 14 days, we've had seven new cases in Newton. We really feel it's more than that, because now that people get their own test kits, they're certainly not reporting it.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind. If you need test kits, call us, but pay attention to your symptoms. It's the silliest things, and all of a sudden, whoops, I'm positive. So that's that. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Trish?
So I was just wondering if you wanted to do the requisitions from ARPA right away, so in case you have any questions?
That might make sense. Have the proposed motions there, anybody?
Under requisitions.
First one would be E911 contact.
Yeah, we want to do that first, yeah.
So we want to move, move to authorize the chairman to sign the emergency notification system primary contact form, naming Tricia McCarthy as the primary contact for the town.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's second?
Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And if we scroll down to requisitions, it's the first ARPA one, so second.
So the first, yeah, the second one down?
Yeah. See the three?
Move to sign requisition ARPA-2023-001 in the amount of $1,754.82 for the security cameras at the Town Beach and Greenie Park. Funds to come from the ARPA fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one?
Move to sign requisition ARPA-2023-002 in the amount of $7,371.80 for the new voting booth. Funds to come from the ARPA fund.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one more.
Move to sign requisition ARPA-2023-003 in the amount of $756 for two monitors that will be used to view the security cameras. The fund will come, to come from the ARPA fund.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I think that's all of them, right?
I think I got them all, right?
Yeah.
You did, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
What about the one for the fire department?
That wasn't under ARPA. We'll go back to it.
Oh, oh, you're just doing that.
We're just, while Trish was standing there. All right. So C is internet access to Town Beach and Greenie Park, which I think goes along with what we just talked about, right? So I believe we have any, is that the consolidated communications one?
Correct.
Do we want to talk to this, other than the fact that what we've already heard is that this is necessary?
Yes, it's necessary if you want to be able to view the cameras remotely.
Exactly.
It's $90 per site for a month, and that does not include fees and taxes.
Okay.
So there was just some discussion about the ARPA was going to pay for the first year's service, and the second, subsequent years would be from the, be included in the police department budget. I don't know if you, if you want to do it that way, or if there was discussion, I think, from the ARPA committee that they may want to change that portion of it.
So ARPA figured that in order to get this, because it is really important, as you all know, you all got an individual call from either myself or the chief, for this to get set up as soon as possible. So ARPA figured that we should at least pay for the first year. That gives us, you, time to figure out. ARPA doesn't really feel it should come from the police department. I don't know if it should come from government buildings. This is security for two locations. It's not like it's his building. So we can, it's, throw that out at you so that you can think about how you want to handle that as we go through budgets, you know, starting in June or July, whenever we start doing that. But to initially get it started, ARPA wants to pay for the first year, which 90 a month, what's it, 21-something, I think, for the first year. So we're just tossing that out. We talked about it. I know the chief said he'd put it in his budget. We felt that it wasn't really his, it's different if it was his cameras at his building, this camera at this town hall, or the fire station at the fire station. We just think that you should think about that when we start doing budgets.
Okay, thank you. So do we want to approach it from that point of view, is when we start doing budgets, we can make the decision?
I, I think that would be a good move.
But who, so that we don't get to budgets and forget it, who's going to put it as a placeholder?
On the parking lot?
On the parking lot, yes.
The chief just raised his hand.
So, yeah, so make sure, if we decide it goes there, great, but don't get stuck and go, I didn't budget it. Good.
All right. So anybody want to make this motion for internet for the Town Beach and the park?
Move the authorize, move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreements with consolidated communications to provide internet access to the Town Beach and Greenie Park for a monthly service fee of $90 per site, which does not include fees and taxes. Funds for the first year of service will come from the ARPA funds.
And then don't do it and stop there.
Okay.
Because you don't know where, otherwise it will have to come out of the pool.
Well, I was going to say to be determined.
Oh, yeah, okay, that'd be good.
Either that or just hold on to that part for a year.
Yeah. You know what, I'm going to just stop.
Don't, don't forget it. Don't forget it. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving right along.
Okay, so you already did the E911 contact, so that's good.
Yeah.
So I think you're down to the transfer station?
Transfer station site monitoring permit. We have that here. Is this?
As you know, every five years, we have to go back to DES, and we file for our permit for site monitoring, the groundwater there. And our five years is up this year. So this company is a company that has done this for us, and they're the ones that actually do the monitoring for our wells and the groundwater over there. And they will go out and file the necessary paperwork with DES to make sure that we're illegal.
In compliance.
Illegal, yeah.
And just so everybody out there knows that because they've already been doing the work, they have all the proper information, because in their report for the application, they have to put down what the test results were and all that other good stuff that came up with, so that they can justify the permit and being able to renew it. So with that said, I'm going to move to sign requisition TS-2023-001 in the amount on $2,000 for the permit application fee to the state of New Hampshire, DES, for site monitoring at the transfer station.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and you still need to authorize, you need to have the chairman sign the agreement with the Gillespie and Associates?
Yeah, I'll do that. Move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with RW Gillespie and Associates in the amount of not to exceed $29,200, and file the necessary paperwork with the DES, Department of Environmental Services, and/or site monitoring at the transfer station. Funds to come from the 2023 transfer station budget.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Next one is, it's that time of year once again.
It's always that time of year.
It's always that time of year.
For something.
Vaschan and Clouquet for the audit engagement. And we have a letter here that we typically sign in order to engage them for audit purposes. Anything else we need to add to that, other than this will, this will kick off that whole process?
No, I think you got it covered there.
So we'll move to authorize the chairman to sign engagement letter with Vaschan and Clouquet to conduct the 2022 financial audit.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I think, I think, did we say just the one signature on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. So moving right along. G, bicycle charity ride to end Alzheimer's.
So they do this every year, and I believe it's going to be in June again this year. They ride through the town. There's no pit stops or anything, water breaks or anything. They're just using some of the roads to get through.
Chief, you got any problem with that?
Good cause.
So I guess we'll move to authorize the chairman to sign the acknowledgement letter for the ride to end Alzheimer's charity event.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and keep clicking off of that one.
You want to do the timber tax yield?
Yes, please.
Move to authorize the tax collector to collect the timber yield tax levy in the amount of $222.13 for tax map 4-7-1.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the only timber tax, right?
Yeah.
So we went to other business. Do we want to do the?
We'll get the requisition for the fire department.
Requisitions? Yeah, go ahead, if you have.
Move to sign requisition 1056-FD in the amount of $3,195 for the EV blanket from the fire tech and safety funds to come from the fire department's budget, Department 2023 budget.
Anybody want?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, hold on. Do you want to go back up to those manifest?
Yes, please.
Do you want, okay, you're going back to the manifest?
Yeah.
Get those, get those before we forget them. Move to sign cable revolving fund dated February 7, 2023, in the amount of $461.72.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And one more. Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period, January 15 through the 28, 2023, with a pay date of February 2, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we are, all is back on.
You're down to the tax credit.
Veterans' tax credit. We have a few of those.
Okay, move to sign the veterans' tax credit for tax map 13-2-15-19, begin in tax year 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign the veterans' tax credit for tax map 13-3-12, begin in tax year 2023. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we miss one here?
Yeah, the top one.
Was it the top one?
Move to sign requisition for veterans' tax credit for tax years 2021 and 2022 in the amount of $500.
Second.
Right, but you need to, I, I'm about to add.
There's no identification.
Yeah, it's in the thing there.
Oh, the folder?
Yeah. I believe it's a piece, it's a letter from the assessor.
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you can just add in the tax and map number?
Okay, so I'm going to friendly amendment, Bob. Is tax map 13-2-15-19. Actually, that's not that one.
Yeah, it could be.
It could be?
So what it is, yeah, what it is, is this particular piece of property has had a credit, but it's a veteran's credit, and it got taken off by accident for those two past years. So we're giving him that credit, and he's the person, the owner is getting credit again, being, another, being reestablished as a credit, as a veteran.
I see now.
So he has two things.
Okay, thank you. So I amended. Bob was okay with the amendment? Still a second?
I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, we're on to abatement.
We'll just sign the abatement request in the amount of $850.63 for tax map 7-5-2 due to incorrect house measurements.
Second.
Hadn't heard this one yet.
So do one on me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody want to do the minutes while we're on here?
Move to accept the non-public session and public meeting minutes dated January 29, 2023, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the public meeting minutes dated February 4, 2023, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're on to other business. I have something. So this is a letter I'm going to read that I received on behalf of the board last night. This letter is from Mark J. Andrews of Eight Nabbies Point Road, Ipswich, Mass. I'll read it as to Matthew A. Burl, chairman, and members of the Board of Selectment of the town of Newton. Dear Mr. Chairman and members, I am writing to offer an update on my medical status as of February 6, 2023. Please note that although I have made some progress to date, I do not feel that I will be able to return to work. Thus, I am retiring from my position as town administrator effective February 22, 2023. Thank you again for your continued support, assistance, and opportunities to serve as Newton's Town Administrator. Sincerely, Mark J. Andrews.
Move to accept his letter of retirement.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? I'm going to throw something in here for discussion. I'd like to thank Mark for his service to the town. I appreciate what he did for this town in the short amount of time he was here. I think he was still learning a lot, and we're, we're on a good track. I'm sorry to see him leave. And I think the town lost today.
I'd like to second that. I think, I think the town lost a good person, a good employee here.
And wish him well in his future endeavors.
I wish him all the health, all the good health.
Any other comments? Anybody? Comments, Charlie, anything?
No comment.
Okay.
Not getting sued.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the inevitable question becomes, what are we going to do next? So what you might want to do is you might just want to take the tape of me from the meeting eight months ago, because we've taken a few steps forward, now we're taking a bunch of steps back, so we're starting over again. The board is interested in having MRI repost for this job. I will tell you right now, based on just what I've read, whether it be, you know, on, postings online or whatever, or, you know, in the newspaper nationally, this is an issue. It's going to be an uphill climb for us to fill this job.
Yep.
It is going to be worse than it was before. And it's not going to happen quick. Like I said, the town lost, and we're going to have to find a way to move forward. And, you know, salaries being what they are, I talked about this a little bit on Saturday, is people can write their own, own ticket for salaries for municipal jobs these days. And it's a buyer's market, so we will do the best we can. I don't envy the position we are in, so, but here we are. Anything else for town?
God have mercy on us.
Anybody have anything else to add for this meeting?
No, I'd just like to say it is going to be an uphill battle, but should the, should the town not vote to move forward with the budget, and it goes to the default budget, this gets even harder for this town to move forward. So I'd like the town people to think about this and really understand what's at stake when it comes down to this election, especially when it comes down to this budget. It can have a very crippling effect on us if we do not pass this budget.
That's a good point.
I'm going to go further and say, not could have, it will have a crippling effect on this town. If that budget is not approved, then we go to default. The town services in this town will severely suffer in all phases. It'll suffer police, fire, it'll suffer with your municipal personnel that are serving in this building at Town Hall during the day. The town transfer station will probably end up having to be closed, and will only be open a couple days a week. And we will be lacking, like, like we just said, in all, in all aspects, if it's not because of one, and the huge one is payroll, like we're talking about. We've had multiple, the police chief, the fire chief has come to us, these other towns, they've been stealing our candidates that we've trained in all these positions, and been taking them from us, and offering them sign-on bonuses, paying extreme amounts of money to them to bolster their, their divisions in all said areas. And this is what we're up against, like Matt said, about getting a town administrator in here, that we're going to essentially have to do the same thing that the other towns have been doing to us. And if that town budget does not get approved, I, words can't express what, what's going to take place.
Yeah, basically, you know, quite frankly, is we're going to have to entice somebody, somebody who's working for another town right now, we're going to have to entice them to quit their job and come work for us. So that's why I say it's an uphill climb. So here we are. are. Anything else for this meeting? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.